Kristen, we are now live. Thank you. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Berkeley Planning Commission. Today is Tuesday, June 23rd. In accordance with the ongoing state of emergency and the Governor's Executive Order 2020-75, this meeting is once again being conducted virtually on the Zoom platform, and I will give instructions for how you can comment on the items during the first citizen comment. With that, will everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, next up, we have roll call. Ms. Luto, can you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Buckler?
Yeah.
Commissioner Campbell? Commissioner Kempner?
Here.
Commissioner Murad?
I think he's here. Tim, you're muted.
You're muted.
I'm here. Yeah, I'm here.
Commissioner Patterson?
Here.
Commissioner Richardson?
Present.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Trotto?
Here.
Chair Kapalansky?
Here.
Okay, moving on to consideration and approval of the agenda, I will, as is typical on the Zoom meetings, ask each commissioner if they have any amendments to the agenda. Commissioner Richardson, any amendments or changes?
No amendments.
Commissioner Smith?
No amendments.
Commissioner Murad?
None.
Commissioner Patterson?
No.
Commissioner Kempner?
None.
Commissioner Trotto?
No.
And Commissioner Buckler?
No.
Would anyone like to make a motion to approve the agenda?
I'm moved.
Second.
Support.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Erin, could you please call the roll on that?
Kempner?
Yes.
Murad?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Trotto?
Yes.
Buckler?
Yes.
Kapalansky?
Yes. Okay, next up, we have consideration of the May 26th Planning Commission minutes. I will again ask each commissioner if they have any amendments to those minutes. Commissioner Kempner?
No amendments.
Commissioner Trotto?
No amendments.
Commissioner Richardson?
No amendments.
Commissioner Patterson?
No amendments.
Commissioner Smith?
No amendments.
Commissioner Buckler? All set? Commissioner Murad?
No, no amendments.
Okay, would anyone like to make a motion to approve the 5:26 minutes?
Motion to approve. Second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Ms. Luto, could you call the roll, please?
Murad?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Trotto?
Yes.
Buckler?
Yes.
Kempner?
Yes.
Kapalansky?
Yes. Okay, do we have any communications that need to be shared this evening?
No, we do not.
Okay, so that brings us to citizen comment. If any members of the public wish to comment on an item not on the agenda, this would be the time. We will have a comment time available for the agenda items at the appropriate time. We ask you to please use the raise your hand feature or dial *9 if you've called in. Comments can also be submitted to planning@berklee-mish.net. As a reminder, the Planning Commission will not engage you in any discussion. Please state your name and address and keep your comments two, three minutes or less. Do we have any members of the public wishing to comment?
Not at this time.
No.
Okay, then we'll move on to our first agenda item, which is a public hearing for zoning ordinance amendment for section 138-298 to remove references to BOKA. Ms. Luto, did you want to give any intro on that?
Um, yes. Uh, I'd just like to reference my review letter that was in your packets. Uh, this is the same letter that we had, or the same item that we had discussed last month relating to the references to BOKA within the zoning ordinance, specifically in section 138-298. BOKA has, has not been in existence since 1996 or 1997. So we feel it's important to remove this reference in the zoning ordinance and replace it with the Michigan Residential Code. We have done the amendments to the, all references to BOKA in the rest of the code ordinances, and this one needed to come before you with the public hearing. So we're looking for a recommendation to city council this evening.
Okay, um, this is a public hearing. Do we have any members of the public who wish to comment on this item?
I see, I see none at this time.
Okay, did we receive any emails on this item?
No, we did not.
Okay, so with that, I'm going to open and close the public hearing. Are there any comments from any commissioners? Or motions if there's no comments? Uh, Mr. Smith? Oh, sorry.
Yes, Ms. Chairman, I can make a motion to recommend zoning ordinance text amendment for section 138-298 to the city council for their approval.
I'll support it.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any additional comments on this item? Seems pretty straightforward. No? Okay, Ms. Luto, could you call the roll, please?
Patterson?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Trotto?
Yes.
Buckler?
Yes.
Kempner?
Yes.
Murad?
Yes.
Kapalansky?
Yes. Okay, moving on to our next public hearing, a public hearing for zoning ordinance amendment for what section 138-526 to include site regulations for the LB district. I believe this is just a carryover from our previous zoning ordinance iterations that was accidentally left out. Ms. Luto, did you have anything to add for that?
No, uh, we discussed this as a discussion item at the last meeting, and per requirements, the public hearing needed to be held. We really believe that this was just something that was inadvertently missed during the last zoning ordinance amendments to this section back in 2007, 2008. So we wanted to make sure that we, we put it back as it was intended to be back at that time. So in your packet is not only my review letter stating that, but some of the previous approved zoning ordinances, where you can see where it was in the, in the ordinance, and then somewhere along the way it just got missed, and then our, our proposed regulation to, to add it back in. So it would be in line with the Woodward District, District, the Gateway District, 11 Mile District. So it would follow suit with, with those height and setback regulations.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Are there any members of the public who wish to comment?
Seeing none at this time.
And did we receive any emails?
We did not.
Okay, so again, I will open and close the public hearing on this item. Any comments from the commission? No, I didn't, I didn't think so. Okay, so again, this is a very straightforward item, not a whole lot to discuss here. Does anyone want to make a motion?
I can make a motion to recommend support for the local business district site regulation and schedule with regulation, section 138-526.
Okay, we have a motion and a support by Commissioner Buckler.
I will support.
Okay, any additional comments on the motion?
Uh, question?
Sure.
Does this require city council action, or is this just something we do?
So this would require this recommendation to council, and they would ultimately approve or deny the proposed amendment.
Okay.
Anything else? Okay, Ms. Luto, could you call the roll, please?
Richardson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Trotto?
Yes.
Buckler? Kempner?
Yes.
Murad?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Kapalansky?
Yes. Okay, next up, we have a discussion to modify parking requirements. Erin, did you want to introduce this item?
Yes, this is something that we've talked about before. Um, so our last discussion with this came about in February 2020, just before the lockdown and the shutdown and the last time we were able to meet in person. So I wanted to bring this back as a discussion item to keep this conversation going. So the proposed idea, or the proposed ordinance language, would include a modification for parking requirements during site plan review only. So this is when a property is being developed. If there was an opportunity for the applicant developer to utilize a different parking standard that they feel would be more appropriate, or to incorporate more green space, if they felt that the parking standard was too stringent for their proposed use, they could make a request to the Planning Commission for that type of modification. The Planning Commission would then have the discretion to modify or not, and this would allow them to move forward with their approval rather than going for a variance which runs with the land. This would be something that would be specific to their site plan approval. I have included a list of factors that the Planning Commission would be able to reference and take into consideration with these modification requirements. During our last discussion, there was a mention of a threshold or a percentage cap, and that kind of went back and forth. And where it left off was that they felt, Planning Commission felt they could have that authority to, to make that decision on that numerical change. However, if a percentage cap would be something that the Planning Commission felt that they wanted to include just as a, a bar that we cannot go, go above, that's certainly something that we can include in this one. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Okay. Um, before we start, is there anyone from the public who wants to comment on this?
I'm seeing none at this time, Chairman.
Okay. Who would like to start the discussion on, on this item, then?
Guess I will.
Okay.
So I have one question and four very brief, very simple comments. The proposed language says that the, can you hear me? Everybody hear me? It's tied, that the parking exception is tied to the specific use and site plan approved. So I just, I just had a question as to whether, if, you know, the owner submits a subsequent site plan, maybe years later, for some different aspect of the, of the property, whether that would, um, you know, invalidate the, the, the parking, I'm not going to call it a variance, but the parking deviation that was originally granted. I just, I just wonder if it's been thought through how to phrase that so we tie the deviation to the right event. So I'm, I'm just kind of throwing that out there. And then just for language issues, just briefly, on D, it says provision of, in the factors, provision of valet parking or other means. Now, other means to me would be shared parking agreements. Is there any reason we wouldn't want to put the words "shared parking" into that, you know, into that portion of the factors? So I invite comment on that. And then on F, neighborhood or other surrounding characteristics unique to the property justify the requested deviation? I'm just wondering what kinds of examples of unique circumstances are we thinking of when we, um, when we talk about granting a deviation? You know, it's, it's, I sat there, you know, what could justify it? And I really couldn't come up with any good answers. Then on G, strict application of the ordinance, et cetera. To me, that, that element there is really just a summary of all the other ones. So I don't even know if it, if it really needs to be in there. It's kind of redundant. H, modification will not impact or negatively affect public parking? Well, I'd put a modifier in there, something like will not unduly impact, because, you know, we're, we're likely to be in situations where there'd be at least some impact on, on public parking if we, if we grant this. I don't think zero impact is, is realistic. So those are just quick thoughts that I had about the language. These are, I'd say mostly just language comments, based comments, and, and that's all I had for now.
Okay. Who else would like to comment on this?
I have a question.
Oh, sorry, Lisa, I just saw his hand in the grace.
I don't know.
I'll come to you next.
Well, the only I wanted to put in there is there a means that we could put into the city to actually come back after the fact? Because if we're granting some of the variants, or really sort of like a modification to their parking, and five years down the road it is not working out, does the city have the ability to come back after the fact and review, or re-review the, or the current site plan?
So Erin, you can jump in on this one, too, but that would be kind of like land bank parking, where we say an applicant can keep us an area for a green space. But if, you know, two years down the road, or however long it is, there's a parking problem on the site, then the city would require them to turn that into parking. And I think that's different than what we're talking about here. We're talking about a permanent modification for a particular site plan, not necessarily land banked. Is that right, Erin?
Well, we did include, one of the factors is that there is banked or reserved parking for future use. So if we were to grant them a modification of, say, six or seven spaces, and say you can use this as keeping as your green space, but that'll be banked or reserved parking if there is a parking problem in the future, and then that could be a condition of their site plan approval.
Um, so are you all set, Matt? Or, because I wanted to ask a follow-up question.
The only concern I have is that the city has some recourse to come back if something doesn't work out. If you end up in a situation where you, hang on, I haven't talked, sorry. Sorry. But no, that's the only I want is that the city has some kind of a recourse. That's all.
Yeah, and that's where the, the banked or the reserved parking for future use could, could come into play.
I'm not even referring to the banked parking. I'm referring just in general, if they don't have a land bank, and they just give them a, a modification of two or three parking spots, and then they realize that they're not capable of doing it on a regular basis, then the city should have some, some means of coming back and saying, hey, if this isn't working, we need to re-review your site plan and come up with some other means. But what do you, what could we do to put in some verbiage so that the city can have the ability to go back and say, no, it's not working?
So that's really what land bank parking is? So I'm, I'm envisioning a plan, if we were to have someone come forward and say they want a, a reduction or modification in their parking requirements, there's, we would be asking for two separate things, right? One is you have to reserve green space, let's say, where you could put this additional parking in. But they could be requesting a modification where they're building the site out. They, they don't have any space left to put in additional parking if it's deemed a problem later. So that's something I guess we should talk about now. Do we want to just allow for only land banked parking? Where they have to reserve some space that could be used in the future for parking if needed? Or do we want to look at allowing just a general parking modification for sites in general? So it sounds like, Matt, you would be for the park, the, the situation where they have some, some area left over to accommodate the additional parking if needed?
That's correct. I would prefer a land bank scenario. If it's a maxed out site and you're short five, six spaces, then I would not be able to agree with it. Unless there's some extenuating circumstance where you have, you know, the smart bus parking, or, you know, the mogul bike location, something like that. But I mean, it's, if you don't have the parking available, it shouldn't be just given to them because we have the ability to.
Okay. Are you all set, Matt? Yes? Okay, Ms. Kempner?
Okay, so before I go to my question, I'm going to give my thoughts on that. Um, I, I would like to think that we're not using this willy-nilly, right? That it's when something serious comes before, so we go, yeah, you actually were asking too much of your parking. Lossalet comes to mind, right? And yes, technically, that would have been green space anyways. They could have, but I wouldn't have looked at that like we might need to save this and land bank it, because it just was pretty clear, at least to me, that, that in that instance, we were asking too much parking for what they would realistically need. So I don't think we have to automatically guarantee that it has to be a land banked. We just need to like really carefully examine what they're asking and what reality will be. My question is, is that when we talked about this last time, I asked what our, um, what our city attorney thought? And the answer was that he wanted a cap. So my question is, is he okay? Like, does he give this version his blessing? Or does he feel like having a cap keeps us safer in, in terms of lawsuits?
Yeah, he and I discussed that, and he does feel that a, a cap would probably be on the better side just in case we get to any kind of legal, legal issues and we have to defend it. So that's absolutely something that we can, I can add into that for our discussion next time.
Ms. Buckler?
Oh, thanks. So to Matt's point, Mr. Trotto's point of if they're too short, do we go back to them? What happens if we demanded too much of them and they never need it? Do they get to come back to us? There's a lot of extra parking in some of these buildings that has never, ever been used because it was a function of our requirement. I think STAN-TAC comes to mind. Like, there's never been filled, it'll never get filled, it'll never, ever, ever, whatever. So I, I'm not, I, I don't think we have to have the banking. Some of these, we're not going to do it willy-nilly, but I think some of it we live with. I think if it's like we give it, and it's like, oh, but we'll have to take it away, where are they going to get the parking from? They're either going to have to shrink their business down, which is like puts them in jeopardy of losing their business, because now they go from X percent, you know, 100% to some kind of model of 75%, where they can't make their nut. And then we have an empty building and lots of parking. Um, I think we have to just be contemplative when we do this and think about what it could mean and what the options would be if they determine that they need more parking. It might be a short-term thing. They could have like a early surge, and then they get, you know, a groove. Because if we judged everything on early surge parking, you know, Bagger Dave's would have a gigantic lot.
Right.
Down the street for like a couple of months, and then now they barely fill their parking lot. Again, it's, I, I think we have to just take it with a little bit of a leap, but they have to have certainty, the people that come to us for, for site plan review. If it's like they're always in, in fear of like, oh, I have too many customers. Stop coming in, I'm going to lose my parking thing. Nobody's going to ask for it. So that's it.
Okay.
Well, where's the clue?
Anyone, anyone else?
Ms. Ms. Chairman?
Yes.
I'd like to, um, and I don't know what the language is. You know, there's a lot of sections in our ordinance that we say something is sort of, and of course, I didn't bother looking them up, but we say something, sort of the Planning Commission reserves the right to modify, blah, 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 whatever. I don't want this to be a request for a modification to be the norm. If I read this in someone's ordinance and I had a client, hey, here's this, and I'd automatically go for it. You know, uh, you know, everybody wants to max out the building of their site. I mean, that's just ma, that's just economic, uh, reality. Is, is there some language, you know, that, you know, this, so this is not a norm, as I said, but something that we may, you do say it in here, we may consider a request. I'd like to make it a little more difficult so it doesn't become something they automatically do when they apply. That's just, that's, that's all I really have.
Okay, so we could add something where an applicant has to submit some sort of data to back up their request.
We do have that.
So?
You know, well, I guess, well, I, I'm just concerned that, um, you know, if we were to say we will entertain a request to modify our parking ordinance, what everybody's going to want to do it then? And we're going to be doing that for, you know, not every project, for a lot of projects. And we do have a schedule that they must provide, you know, one, two, three, four, whatever our items are. Uh, we, we talk about an alternative, uh, uh, start parking study from a reasonable source, you know, a real source, not one that's, you know, someone made up themselves. But we have, we have certain things. But I don't want this to become, and as I read this, as someone, as, as you know, as someone who applies, the first thing I would do is say, hey, good, they're going to allow us to modify their parking, so let's go for it. Uh, and I don't want it to become the norm. And I, I just want to say, we will reserve the right to entertain modifications, but it must have standards one, two, three, and then maybe because of these A through I reasons, make it difficult. So just so it isn't an automatic request on every site plan that we get. And I don't know what the language is, because I didn't, like I said, I didn't bother looking up other things. But I think there's some way of handling it in, in that respect.
Commissioner Trotto?
Um, I'm kind of feeding off of Marty's statement, but I wanted to twist it a little bit. Is it a possibility where we can make it not an option for the future tenant moving in to even utilize this? It would just be the planning commissioner's option to utilize this?
You mean that if someone comes in with a site plan, we could say, hey, it looks like you have too much parking. Did you consider?
I want to be in a position where they can say, hey, this is an option that's hanging out there in the ordinance. I want it to be so only the planning commission can bring this into play. Not a standard customer coming in and saying, I want to build this building, but hey, I'm 10 parking spots short, will you work with me? It, it should be a, we are, we have the capability to do this, and the planning commission looks at it and says, you know, I don't think we need this. Let's enact this ordinance and say this, we could do this and work with you. I don't want to put it in play where they can utilize it to their advantage every single time, because I, I see them, and I know how, and how these owners are. They're going to want to use this as much as possible. I'd like it limited to just be the planning commission brings it into play, not the owners.
So I agree with that thought pattern that we should use this sparingly, that it, it's not intended for every single site, but it's nice to have that option out there, because I think there are extenuating circumstances and rare cases where it makes sense to do something like this. As far as writing something up where you say the Planning Commission reserves the right to suggest a parking modification or something like that, I guess I, I'd want to defer to the city attorney. I don't know of any ordinances that are written that way. And whether or not we have a flood of modification requests, I think is partly our job to be stringent with whether or not we grant those requests, and Erin's job to make sure she's communicating to applicants that the Planning Commission does not intend for this to be used frequently, that it, it's really only to be used in exceptional cases. I don't know if you have any thoughts on that idea, Erin, of writing in of Matt's suggestion? I, I hadn't heard of that, and I think it's something we'd have to run by John Starensen.
Yeah. For it to be something that the Planning Commission suggests or offers, I haven't seen that written that way in any, in any ordinance that I've come across. For it to be something that the planning commission suggests or offers, I haven't seen that written that way in any, in any ordinance that I've come across. It's it's been um, a request made by the applicant or planning commission may have the authority, blah, blah, blah. Um, so I'd have to check with uh with the city attorney on that. Um, but in terms of it being done sparingly, this is not something that I was thinking that every development would be under the guise to. To get this. This would be something that I would explain to them very carefully why um. If they were, if they were banking on this as a, well, we just don't want to put all of it in, or or whatever the case may be, we want to extend our area. They would have to defend that and provide, that's why I I made a list of um, of of factors that the planning commission could. Consider during their discussion because I wanted the applicant to provide something more than just what we want it, we need it. Uh, we want to make, we want to utilize our our site as much as possible, so we don't want to put in the parking. I don't think that's a good enough reason, but something along the lines of, um, you know, we wanted to have enough, you know, some extra green space for our. Um. For our residents, or we wanted to, you know, put in some green infrastructure over here because there's a lot of flooding um problems on this site and with the adjacent properties. Those are things that I think would would warrant or would be worthy of a discussion of a modification, but certainly not a a willy nilly applies to all. Uh, type of modification.
Um. Commissioner Trotto, did you have something else to add? You still have your hand raised? Good, okay. Um, anyone else who wants to comment on this item?
Nice.
I just add. Oh, sorry.
Go ahead, okay.
Please.
And then Mr. Patterson.
Okay, I was just gonna say, eh, can it be something as simple as like in rare circumstances, the planning commission can, you know. Shall have the discretion, something that indicates a little bit harsher or a little bit more, I mean, is it just wordsmithing this a little bit? Just to give more of an impression like, don't expect to just do it on every site plan?
So I think maybe that's the difference between may and shall. The planning commission may modify requirements as opposed to the planning commission shall modify requirements if all of these standards are met. Erin, what do you think about that?
Yeah, that that's an easy fix. They may um. You know, we can certainly. Tweak the language to convey in rare circumstances or based on the following factors.
Yeah, no definite words. Keep it. May, could, might. You know, we did one last month uh on the on the facade, the glazing on the facade of the credit union. You know, our ordinance is very strict, forty to eighty percent glass on the, on the uh front facade, but we reserve the right to modify that. Under circum, certain circumstances. And like I said, I don't have it in front of me, I'm sorry, but you know, something to that respect, and maybe that's what it says here. I'm just not, I'm just not connecting. But I think we get uh uh the qualifiers are all may and might and all that instead of shall. Uh, I think that goes a long way.
Mr. Patterson?
Yeah, my only question, this just, these are for parking that uh site reviews that come to the. Planning commission, not the ones administratively. Done, correct? So it would have to come to the board. Okay, that's all I wanted to clarify.
Yeah, these are really reserved for full site developments such as acquitats or um the Losolot.
Yeah, Losolot, yeah, for sure.
Really developing the site, but a reoccupancy um. Uh. From one use to another would not warrant a a a meeting or a a discussion before the planning commission, so they would not be subject to any kind of. Modification. This would be strictly through the site plan approval process.
All right, perfect. Thank you.
Mr. Mirad?
Well, Mr. Smith stole my thunder, but that's what I was gonna say is. For the facade and the windows, we have the discretion to accept less. Like we did last month for the credit union. And I think. Some, something worded similar to how that is worded is all we need for this. Because I know. I think this all came up because of Losolot, because I think I was the one that kind of questioned. Can we reduce it so that we could have had that small space to the south of the building? Be green space. It would have been much better than six parking spaces, so. You know, and that's, that's a situation where. We probably all feel that six parking spaces would not have made. Much of an impact on that site, but. Then there's another site that maybe it only has six parking spaces and we feel it needs eight. You know, you can't reject it. Or it's six part, six, and we think the site might look better with five because we really only think it's gonna be four cars there, so. You know, and and I think this is a temporary measure until we can get through and. Revise the parking ordinance and get it modernized. We'll use that word, so. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else who wants to comment on this item? Uh, Mr. Smith?
Chair, you know, a couple of months ago, we had our log cabin art gallery here on Twelve Mile. And um. They requested, they made a a long argument that they didn't need as many parking spaces, if I remember correctly, than the ordinance required. And I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, I believe that we granted them a couple uh. An approval with a couple less parking spaces that we would have a uh required for a a a another business. So. What we're seeing here is if they cease to exist and someone else wants to move in there, the variance, or well, it's not a variance, but the uh. Modification does not apply to the next owner, correct? Or the next tenant, correct?
Well, the, the modification would apply if the use stays exactly the same. Any change in the use, the scope, or the intensity of the property would then revert to the standard parking uh requirements in our ordinance. So if it went from an art gallery to a restaurant, they're not allowed any kind of modification that was previously granted on that uh.
Correct.
On that site. Now, the, that art studio, they, they had sufficient parking. They, they weren't granted a a modification.
Oh, I I would, then I misspoke, okay. I thought they were looking for a few less spaces than um. Then we felt they needed based on their square footage. Then I misspoke. It seemed to me that, but you answered my question in a situation. And it is written in here like that. I just wanted to make sure that's correct.
Yeah.
So say it's an art gallery, needs very few, but if a more intense business. You know, could be a business, could be a a restaurant, as you say, it does not follow. It's a, it's a, a, a. It's a applicant's. Modification, not a variance with the property, and it does say that in here. I just want to make it very clear for everybody. Okay.
And the only, if I may. Um, one other thing that um. Kind of talked about was that if a. If a property were to come forward and wanted to develop things a little bit differently. Um, they would have to come back through for site plan approval process. So this is something that is tied specifically to that use and not anything that would go. You know, as as Mark, Commissioner Smith said, at infinitum for any other use throughout the the process.
With the land.
With the land, yes.
Okay.
Anything else on this item? Erin, do you have any additional questions or need any additional direction from us?
Well, the only thing I would say is that, you know, we talked about a cap. Is there a percentage that you wanted to to leave it a cap at?
So I, I think myself, I would be interested in seeing what other communities, um comparable communities use for their cap. I I think I've seen maybe ten or twenty percent as potential. Options. I I wouldn't be comfortable going above twenty myself. Um, I don't know if any other commissioners have any thoughts on that?
Ten percent just pops into my head too, but I'd like to see what. I don't prefer a cap, but I understand there may be some legal. Uh, ramifications down the road to it that we must, you know, probably need, probably do need a maximum.
Ms. Buckler?
Um, it has to be something that can round to a whole number, though. Like if their requirement is seven spaces or six, like the hair salon. What do you, what, they get half a space?
Right, you'd have to, if it's point five, then it becomes one, I guess.
Yes. Yeah, I would write that in there um to make that clear. If there's a rounding, it would go up, but um I can put together some um. Comparisons. I did include in in that memo um what two other communities around here do. Um, Lion Township being a little bit more rural and Ferndale uh being a little bit more um similar to Berkeley, but I can look at uh a couple of other communities and see what they do. Bring that back to you as the, another discussion item next month.
Uh. Man, I I don't, I don't know how to use the hand raise.
No, that's fine. If you want to go like this, that works too.
Okay.
Mr. Richardson?
Just quit real quick, um, the percentage cap, you know, is a, the 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 number of spaces is. You know, is going to be a function of the original number of spaces that are required, so twenty percent isn't gonna mean the same number of spaces in. In every case, that that's obvious, but um, but I, what my comment is directed to the implications for that. We need to um think about, you know, is a blanket twenty percent going to actually be workable? Um, in all, you know, in the kind of circumstances that we're. Uh, likely to grant something, you know, I, I mean. I would just urge that that be given some, some thought because, uh, you know, you're. Um. You know, twenty percent of uh six spaces is a lot different than twenty percent of fifty spaces and. Um. Then you want to be looking at, well, why do they need uh the, the, the uh exception anyway? And and is that twenty percent gonna be real? Uh, you know, when we're actually looking at the real application here? So that's, that's all I have to say. Just, just think about that. A little bit um uh before we adopt something.
Fair enough.
And if I may, that whatever the cap may be, whether it's ten percent, twenty percent, that's just the, the maximum of what would be allowed.
Right.
Though they say twenty percent could equal ten spaces, planning commission would have, could have the, would have the authority to say. You know, you're requesting a a modification, but we're only gonna give you one space. Yes, we can give you fifteen, but we're only giving you one because of X, Y, Z. So.
And that's good, you know, um, but um. I'm, I'm, I just don't want to be in, we're, we're, these are gonna come up in unusual circumstances to begin with, and you know. Uh, we want to make sure what we're, what we're doing is workable. And a cap will, you know, it'll tie our hands to a certain extent, so it's gotta be uh out there far enough for us to work with it.
Okay. So with that, we will move on to the next item, which is an update on the master plan.
Um, so our survey ended um at the end of May, and we had over thirteen hundred responses, so it was very exciting. Um, we have been um doing a number of video presentations and webinars. Um, thank you for anyone who has either shown up, participated, or watched them on YouTube. Um, we've had a lot of fun, fun doing them. Um, so our next one is tomorrow evening at six o'clock, and we will be discussing housing. Um, so feel free to to tune in. We have um usually give about a ten to fifteen minute, or Carla Wortman usually gives about a ten to fifteen minute presentation. And then we leave it open to comments, questions, discussions with uh anybody who's watching. Um, so we've had a lot of, a lot of really great feedback and a lot of uh really amazing comments from the public. Um, we have conducted um Zoom focus group discussions. Uh, we had with uh business owners in in the city, both in the DDA and on Woodward eleven mile. Um, we've had senior residents from Oxford Towers and throughout the community. Um, we had. Just a number of really good focus group discussions where uh we were able to dive into a particular topic of something that would work. Was important to to those individuals. Um, so now we're starting to, Carla Wortman is starting to draft the master plan. And um they are drafting a version of the vision, mission, and values. Um, they've shared that with the steering committee, um so those will be able to be shared with you um for discussion and comment next month. Um, but what we need to, what Carla Wortman is asking from the planning commission this evening is. Um, a discussion on how you want to see the plan really come together and be organized. Um. They have found that a thematic approach is usually the way that people like to, like to go. Um, so just curious as to how you would like to see this plan structured and organized. Um. For you as the planning commission, who will then implement a lot of these goals and objectives.
Okay. Um, who would like to start on this item? Okay, I I'll throw out an idea then, as far as the organization goes. Um, so kind of an overarching, I love the idea of the thematic approach. I think that's a great way to organize the plan. Um, one of the overarching things I think that could apply to almost every area of the city is this general idea of sustainability. So you could look at a sustainable housing stack, um sustainability in terms of um. The the traditional sense of environmental that people look at. Sustainable in terms of even parking, you know, you want to have something that. That fits in with the community but is a little bit nimble and and sustainable in the sense that we can maintain it and also that we don't have an underage or an overage. I don't know if anyone is thinking along those, those lines at all, or. Anyone else have any comments?
I can comment. I'm, I am on the steering committee, and we have talked about this. Um, just a couple of quick preliminaries. The uh survey response was very good. It was skewed toward. Um. The vast majority of people that answered had lived here a long time. They were homeowners and had lived here over. Uh, I think over twenty-one years constituted sixty-one percent of the respondents. Um, so it, the survey results don't. Quite match the demographics of the community, and I I think that needs to be looked at a little bit more. Um, the um. This result that struck me was the um relatively high priority accorded to. Increased recreational opportunities in Berkeley, increasing those opportunities. And I'm using that in the broadest sense, not just outdoor or recreation, not just parks, but um. Uh, more restaurants, uh entertainment venues. Um. There, I think, is in in the, in the net, a lot of support for a community center. It's kind of divided between those who wish to remodel uh wha- what we have and those who support building a new one. But I think, I think my takeaway from that is we need a, we need more than what we have there, and and most of the survey respondents. Support that, so. Um, I think i- in in in. To go along with what Chair, Chairperson uh Kaplansky says. Uh, sustainability, outdoor recreation, um. Um, you know, creating a, a, and maintaining an aesthetic in this community, I think is uh. Is is a high priority uh for people. Um, I was relatively surprised by the kind of lack of passion over the parking. Uh, issue. Uh, that wasn't rated as a big a problem as I had anticipated it would be. And if you kind of parse out the answers, what they suggest to me is that the parking problem is not so much too little versus too much. It's efficient use of parking, I think, is what people have identified as a uh. A a a concern. Uh, that's certainly something that we. We can delve into, we should delve into as a planning commission. Um, so um. You know, I, those are my takeaways from the survey, and they kind of jive with my own. Personal priorities. I I I would like to have heard from more of the younger. Part of the the demographic, um. Uh, but I wouldn't be surprised if uh if we do hear from those folks if, if it, if it differs too much on what we've already heard based on the 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 results. Um, as far as structuring the thing, I think uh, I I think thematic um structuring is a great idea. Um, I think the thing needs to be tied together, introduce the themes and in the first part of the of the master plan. Um, apply those themes to the actual districts of the community. The second part of the master plan is how I envision the plan coming together. Um, and and I I support that approach, so. Uh, for whatever it's worth, that's my. Uh, you know, those are my, those are my thoughts on on where we are right now.
Okay, um. Okay, um, anyone else have any thoughts on that? Mr. Trotto?
I just have a question. The survey that was out, why have we not been distributed the results ourselves? Ultimately, the planning commission is responsible for the master plan. Shouldn't we see these results?
Yes, those will be distributed, um, next month. They are, um, being put together in a, the, the survey just ended at the end of May. So, uh, I'm sorry?
I understand that.
Yeah, so, uh, this, it took them some time to get all of the, not only, um, to get all the responses, the hard copy responses in, because there were quite a few, especially those that were, um, submitted from Oxford Towers, um, and then to generate the report and the analysis. So that'll be coming, um, next month.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments on this? Okay, I was just jotting down a couple ideas of some potential themes. Um, I, I had housing, community aesthetic, strong downtowns, urban recreation, and transportation as potential themes. I'm sure Carlisle has, um, some good suggestions too. Um, I had two other comments on the, on the memo in general. I think it, it did ask for some input on parking, or if we had any thoughts on parking. Um, I would continue to support the shared parking district, and I think that kind of goes with Mr. Richardson's comments about the efficient use of parking. Um, so that's great if the, if the survey would support something like that. Um, but that's, that's just my personal opinion. And then, um, I just had a question on, there was, there was specific, and I don't have it pulled up right now, but I have written down, there was a comment about discuss and decide on other types of housing. Um, because I think the survey wasn't necessarily supportive of introducing other types of housing in single-family neighborhoods. Um, so, and I haven't seen the results, but I'm gathering that. Um, but I was confused, I guess, on that question. Maybe you don't have an answer for this, Erin, maybe this is a question for Carlisle. But in the future, when they're asking us for directions on that, I, I don't know what discuss and decide on other types of housing really means. If the, if there, let me pull up the memo.
And I, I can just read it here. So, um, planning to decisions that will need to be made coming at the forefront. Um, in the survey, the respondents prioritized planning for housing for seniors and the disabled, but were not enthusiastic about types of housing other than single-family. Demographic trends point to a need for more senior housing, but also more housing types in the future. The location form of other types of housing needs to be discussed and decided.
So I guess my confusion lay with, are they looking for any direction on this? Unless at this point, is this just kind of like a, a heads up? We're going to need to talk about this in the future, that we think there's a need for this, but the survey doesn't necessarily support it?
Can I jump in?
Yeah, go ahead, Lisa.
Okay, so I've been to, I've been to the webinars and the steering committee. So I, I think these are ideas that we know that we have to explore more in depth with the community. Um, because they did say that they see a need for more senior housing, but when you break down into the survey results, they, there's not a whole lot of love for duplexes or multifamily. They seem to like mixed use, but that doesn't really translate to senior housing. So, um, the corridors, the parking, the housing, those are things that we have to kind of delve deeper into and have those, um, conversations. Um, with the parking, I think, you know, they had some great ideas with the city renting some parking, um, private parking. So in essence, they're kind of municipal lots, but then you have to kind of work through, you know, do we treat it just like a municipal lot with our parking ordinance? If it's just being rented, so there's some other, you know, issues, some give and take that we have to figure out with the community as a whole. Does that help?
Yeah, I, I think so. I just wanted to make sure they weren't looking for any additional direction from us, and I was hoping before we get to that discussion, you know, we'd have a lot more information to consider. But it sounds like, yes, that's the case. Um, anyone else? Um, Lisa, you are all set, right? You still have your hand raised. Okay, uh, anyone else?
Ms. Chairman?
Yes.
What is our role here as a planning commission? Uh, you know, I'll, I'll, I'll honestly, I haven't watched all the webinars. I've watched a few. Uh, I will make it a mission to see them all before our next meeting. But, you know, frankly, I, I'm, I feel a little bit out of the loop here as a, as a planning commissioner. You know, we're, um, last time, we were the people doing this. We took input from other groups, but it, it seems to me that we, so far, we're observers. And, and maybe that's the plan right now. Are we going to have more of an in-depth input on this in the future? Or are we merely going to be presented with something that we comment on and pass? What, what is, what is our role in this? I'm, I'm, and quite honestly, I'm, become a little discouraged about this whole thing as a planning commissioner.
Yeah, so that was, I share some of that too, Marty. Um, you know, that my concern is that we are not presented with a draft plan or draft recommendations. Um, and at that point, I understand, you know, theoretically, things can be changed. But at that point, when you have a whole plan written, you're not, you're not changing a whole lot. Um, so Erin, do you want to kind of comment on that? Because I, I, I share that concern.
Yeah, and I understand that, and a lot of what we've been doing thus far is really a lot of the, the background, uh, work and the community engagement stuff. So, um, now that those activities are coming to a close, um, now you're going to start to see some more of the meat and, and the background and the analysis of what we've been able to do thus far. So you'll see the survey results, the focus group discussion results, all that stuff will be coming next month. So we'll start to get into more of the, the, the planning commission's role on, on moving things forward. There, it won't be just a, a draft, um, for you to comment on and, and needlessly pass. But, um, the, the point of the master plan steering committee is that they do a lot more of the, um, the, 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 the initial steps and the, um, some of those types of, uh, direction, I guess, uh, for, for Carlisle Wortman. And then you can do more of the, um, broader view analysis of the document as it's, as it comes together in that, in that respect. Does that make sense?
Um, a little bit. So do you envision that we'll see some presentations and discussions at our planning commission meetings from Carlisle on some of these larger ideas and topics?
Mm-hmm.
Yes. Uh, if I can chime in again, um, the work so far has just been basically fact gathering. It's, it's been assembling data. Um, and, uh, they're only beginning and to actually look at the data and try to make some sense of it. And they are planning on making presentations, regular presentations to the planning commission. I think the real issue is what, you know, how hands-on is the planning commission going to be as the document begins to be developed? I, I certainly hope, and I would, I would object to a process that just said, well, you know, we're planning commission, we're, uh, we've written the introduction, now we're writing the, 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 um, the, the themes up, a planning commission, we're getting into the, the, the specific areas of town, we're going to apply those themes. Planning commission, uh, uh, you know, uh, we're almost done with a draft, and you're going to be able to look at it. I, I would object to that totally. Um, I, I think that, I think that the document needs to be presented piece by piece to the planning commission, and, and there needs to be an adequate opportunity for discussion and, and feedback. And, and that involves, you know, adequate notice to the commission of what's coming, and, um, you know, an opportunity for discussion, opportunity for comment. Um, you know, ultimately, the planning commission approves this thing. So, um, that's the process I hope there, I hope to see unfold. Uh, you know, and that's certainly where I'm, I'm coming from on this.
And absolutely, because of the pandemic, um, everything's been slowed way down. So I, I think as far as information gathering and all of that, we would generally be further along. But we, we've gone to like Zoom meetings, and they're not necessarily as greatly attended as, you know, we were hoping for some of the in-person stuff to be. So I think everything's moving a little bit slower than normal.
Yeah, our entire community engagement strategy, we had planned on having that completed by mid-April. So the fact that we had to, um, shut everything down of how we were doing it, recalibrate, reconfigure, and then go to, uh, an online forum, really kind of slowed the process down. So, you know, the, there hasn't been a whole lot of, everything, everything up to this point has been the community engagement, the data gathering. They're now starting to do the analysis, and then they're going to start to put things together. So now is when we're going to really have, uh, the, the planning commission do, do more of what they're, what they're meant to do. And it, there was never going to be a point where I was going to say, let's just throw the document to you, and you read it one, one month, and then it's over with. Um, that was never going to be the, the case. Just things, things got pushed back and paused a little bit because of the, because of COVID.
Ms. Buckler?
Um, I would also like to see a detailed memo of any conflicts that, um, the survey and/or these other engagement sessions, um, that, that, between that and the downtown master plan, which, you know, had a similar, it had a lot of community engagement as well. I'd like to see like a detailed list of where any ideas conflict.
I think that's a really good point.
I think residential housing, except, I mean, nobody wants to put a, a, an apartment building in the middle of a residential block. I mean, it's never was the goal. Uh, you know, there's areas where you could phase it in duplex, triplex, into, uh, you know, into single-family housing. But, um, I, I, like, some of the things that came out here are different than what came out in the downtown master plan. I'd like to see where those, you know, what the differences are.
In terms of the participation from the public, right?
Well, like, in the ideas, like, the downtown master plan had a lot of ideas baked into it, and that, uh, you know, if, these are different. I'm not sure. I mean, I realize the downtown, that's a smaller strip of land, but they bleed right into the neighborhoods, because it's right up against it. I can guarantee if we stuck another ten-foot tower up in the community, we'd have a lot of, we'd have a lot of pushback. Because senior housing isn't generally single-family residences, so it, we need to reconcile that with no more. I'm not sure how you get both.
Right, and I guess that's probably what Carlisle's alluding to, that there will have to be some discussion, decisions made, because, right, you can't have it both ways.
We want, we want, we want every to be, everybody to be represented, and everybody to be included in the community. And that takes all housing types to make that happen.
Agreed.
And I, I would say they have to maintain their effort to, to get feedback. Even though the survey is done, they, they need to keep the outreach going. Uh, we do need to hear from other age groups more. And, uh, the, the more reflective of the community the data is, I think the more, uh, support you're going to see for variety of housing types right now. There's not a whole lot of enthusiasm for any, any multifamily, other than, uh, on greenfield. People seem to think, okay, you can put it on greenfield, but, uh, that, that wasn't our vision, uh, at one time for how best to do this, so.
The people in houses there don't feel that way.
No, no.
And, and again, to do something like that, take somebody with a vision and the patience to acquire enough properties to do something like that. And it's not happened. We've, you know, we've created that greenfield district, how many years ago now? Twelve years ago, maybe?
Yeah, something like that.
Your team?
Nothing, yeah, twelve, eighteen years ago.
Never happened to it.
It happened, yeah.
Yeah.
We approved the one, but they never built it.
Right, yeah, the live-work thing, yeah. That's probably ten years ago now, eight years.
No, no, there was an apartment next to the church that was, that we approved. It was like a eight-unit, maybe?
Yeah, there've been a couple, uh.
Before that, maybe even before your time, Michelle.
Yeah, there was a live-work project before that.
There was a live-work project where the main floor was going to be, like, businesses, and then the two floors above, it was going to be a three-story, was going to be living spaces.
That was the same site, I believe.
Same site, yeah, same site. Yeah. So, I don't know.
To address the downtown master plan, um, part in, in the survey, I didn't really see a whole lot of places where it conflicted a whole lot. I mean, people wanted the pocket parks there. Um, there wasn't as much outrage about parking there. Again, it was just kind of about not being located well. Um, too much where you don't need it, and too little where you do need it. Um, and, and, and everybody seems to be really liking the idea of mixed use. Um, so that's something to play with, but then you go back to the corridors kind of thing, and, and how do we even manage being able to develop down there because of the size of the lots? It's very hard to, to get any development or mixed use or, or go up, because then they're going to have more parking needs. And so what does that corridor look like? How do you, how do you address some of that?
Okay, so we'll stay tuned for that. Um, I do think that, that Carlisle and, and the city in general did a good job of pivoting to the virtual engagement. I'm sure that was quite challenging. Um, and it seems like it's been successful, or as, as successful as could be hoped in such a, a situation.
Yeah, but again, there are going to, there is going to be a part of the community, and I'm going to probably say more of the senior part of the community that is not tech-savvy, and they are not going to know how, or will they join a Zoom meeting? So you're not going to hear that voice. Uh, Richardson pointed out that he's the only member of the steering committee that's over sixty years old, so they're not represented on the steering committee. So that's a major issue too, because there are people in their sixties that aren't tech-savvy. They're not going to do a Zoom meeting, they're not going to be able to participate, and they will be left out.
So a cool thing about that.
There, there are a lot of people in that age group that, that want to age in place in their homes here in Berkeley.
Yeah, we, we reached out to a lot of the seniors here in the community. We, I contacted, uh, Oxford Tower specifically. I dropped off, you know, and picked up hard copy surveys from, uh, over sixty residents there. I called a number of senior residents to do one of these Zoom meetings. They can also call in on their phone. So we had a number of people that did attend, um, that meeting. They, they weren't able to have the virtual format like this because, um, they didn't, you know, they didn't have a computer or didn't know how to, but they were able to call in on their phones. And so we did have, um, have representation in a focus group discussion with, uh, with Carla Wortman, yes.
But again, those are people in Oxford Park Towers. They're not a homeowner. They're not trying to maintain a residence as they age in place. So it's a little bit different. I think that's going to be the one big, uh, hole in this if we stay in a situation like this for another six months or even a year, which is possible to happen. So that has to be addressed in some way.
So that's a fair point, and I'm sure they're dealing with this in other communities too.
Oh, yeah, I believe it.
Yep, so, you know, whatever, I'm sure that Carlisle and the staff would welcome any ideas if people have other ideas of how to reach those residents. Um, but I do think that they've done, they've done a good job given the circumstances. Okay, um, moving on then to liaison reports. Does anyone have anything to report?
Uh, I do.
Okay, Mr. Richardson?
So the environmental committee met, uh, officially, uh, last week for the first time since January. Um, I did mean February, but not have a quorum. Uh, we, uh, we had elections, uh, for better or worse, I was re-elected as the chair. Uh, I don't know how, uh, how, how long that goes on, but, um, I'm going to, uh, give it another shot. Um, and, um, obviously, many of the, uh, projects that we, we initiate are on hiatus at this point. Uh, it's a little frustrating, but, um, I am pleased to report that, uh, the groundwater, um, I'm sorry, the stormwater detention project that we entered into through a grant with the Clinton River Watershed Council, um, is, uh, near the point where, uh, some recommendations are going to be made, site-specific recommendations. And again, this is a, this is a project which involves identifying And again, this is a, this is a project which involves identifying suitable locations for additional stormwater detention that would also function as, you know, an aesthetic addition to the community, a natural, a natural terrain reintroduced into the community. And I'm looking forward to, to learning about where those recommended sites are. And, and we'll report on that when, when I get that information, which will be through a Zoom meeting on the 29th. The other thing to report is that we've begun discussing the possibility of a community garden for Berkeley. And I've put on, you know, query up on the, a post up on the committee's Facebook page. Just kind of letting people know that we're considering starting a community garden and soliciting suggestions and ideas for that. And there's obviously a lot that goes into planning community gardens, starting with where is it and how big is it and who's in charge of it? And what are the ground rules for using it and, and all of that? So, that's probably a process that will last through the winter and into the spring. But we, we hope the community becomes enthused about this idea and, and that we can, we can, we can proceed with it. So, that's my report.
Okay. Does anyone have anything else? Liaison reports?
Unfortunately, I missed the last DVA meeting this, this month. So, I apologize for that.
That's all right.
I did attend the chamber meeting. Pretty much all of our events have been canceled right now. So, and a lot of discussion about the, what the city's doing like to help some of the businesses with like outdoor seating and predominantly the restaurants. So, they're trying to capture that. But like for some of the restaurants, like for example, Berkeley Common, they'd already, they'd filled out the application to the city for the outdoor seating. And, but for them, they also have to then get approval from the health department and liquor control. So, for the limited time that they might be able to have it. And then they need tables and chairs, you know? So, it gets very expensive. So, I don't know whether they'll move forward with it or not. But it's just a lot of challenges. Oakland County's doing some things for like, I think all the businesses in Oakland County now, if they apply, they can get a, a kit. Like the thermometer detects people's temperatures and some other things, you know? So, so at least that's happening. So, but beyond that, that's about all we had.
Tim, one good question. Is there going to be talk about the Berkeley Dream Cruise Parade again? I know they canceled that very early and things are opening back up. Is there a possibility?
I don't think so.
And then again?
Nope.
Disappointing.
Yeah, well, actually, it's not the chamber that runs it, it's the city.
Oh, it's the city that did that?
Yeah.
Okay. Anyone else?
Parks and Rec met. We're also working on our recreation master plan, kind of tie it in with the city master plan. And they're doing bids, I think they should be back by now, for the Oxford Merchant Park splash pad. So, those are out for bid. I think it's coming, or they're, should be back by now. But that's it. And we're going to start meeting every other month.
Great.
I guess that was city, I'm sorry.
What's the plan for construction? Is that going to be a fall thing or what?
I thought they said it was going to start because the bid should be back and they'll start and do what they can. I know the original plan was to have it open this year, but they had to wait for the DNR.
Right, okay.
So, I don't know when they'll officially break ground. I'd have to look at the minutes that I took. But soon, I know they're moving on it still.
Right, thanks.
Yeah, and then we're going to be moving to every other month, our meetings instead of every month.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
Okay, any other commissioner or staff comments? Anyone? No? Okay, how about a motion to adjourn? Oh, Ms. Buckler? No? Motion to adjourn?
Oh, excuse me, is this Commissioner Murat's last meeting?
No.
No, okay.
Oh, the city council passed a resolution to extend the current terms for all boards and commissions for 60 days. So, I have asked if Michelle Buckler, Tim Murat, and Kristin Kepelansky could stay on as commissioners for that 60 days. So, their, their terms will expire at the end of June, at the end of August.
Well, okay, I'll put my testimonial where I can find it when I need it then. Glad they're going to be still with us.
Anyone else? Okay, any motions to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Michelle, could you call the roll, please?
Ms.?
You're muted.
Violence is consent.
There, I did mute me, but yes.
Trotto?
Yes.
Buckler? Kepner?
Yes.
Murat?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Kepelansky?
Yes, and I should have mentioned this before we moved to adjourn, but Erin, since the governor's order was extended, would we anticipate our next meeting will be virtual?
Yes, it will.
Okay. Okay, then I will see everyone on Zoom in a month.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Good night.
Have a good, good night, guys.